Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting agenda of Lewiston City Council for Monday, March 24th. This is the time and place. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments this evening? Please come down, name an address for the record, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Praveen Karana and address is 858 Main Street, Lewiston, Idaho. And I have a concern that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council.
Okay. Could you tip the microphone up just a little bit?
Okay, is that better?
Okay.
Alrighty. And it's regarding the recent change that happened at the end of last year in the water billing cycle. It used to be quarterly and now it is monthly. And as a small business owner located downtown, we struggle and been there for eight years and still struggling. And I just wanted to point out some facts that affected me and maybe get some input from the city manager and the city staff on how to deal with the issues that I'm facing. I find that the prospect of having to pay the bill monthly and having to pay the bill quarterly, the quarterly was a better option. And I don't have any empirical data to base what I'm saying because it's still new, but for twofold and for two reasons, I think there are some negatives that come with it. First is it would mean more stationary, more postage, more people hours spent on administering the program. It's a headache for me to put it in a very discreet way, but I would prefer it, you know, to be analyzed and if possible, to go back to the older way where it was every three months. And I've checked with other counties like Lloyd, I've checked with Grangeville, Moscow, they're on three quarterly. The advantage, I don't know what it would be other than that, you know, the bills are paid monthly, which gives a little bit better cash flow. But then if you analyze, you know, the cash flow on a smaller amount, I don't know how much advantage that, you know, adds up to the end of the year. So that is something that can be done in a management audit or, you know, I don't know if money needs to be spent on that, but that is just some thoughts. So I would request you all to consider maybe doing a review of the whole process and if possible, switching back because it means less man-hours that I have to spend on doing bills and one more less thing that I have to worry about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
I do, maybe one and a half.
Sure.
Might be easier.
Please.
My name is Heather Lee. I live at 2070 Wheatlands Avenue. I was anticipating Justin Weeters being here with his petition about ordinance 4596. City code describes the areas around town where skateboards and scooters are prohibited. And in every instance where skaters are prohibited, so also are scooters prohibited. And when the skate park upgrade came along, a prudent person could surmise that the purpose of it would to encompass the users of the modes of transportation that are specified in the existing code and that we wouldn't have to burden a linguist to refer to it as a skate bike scooter park. So, um, as a parent, I wondered why you sent the ordinance back to the committee for review and rewrite and they resubmitted and stood behind the recommendation as it was written. And as I looked into it a little bit more, I realized it was really because you put your trust in the advisory committees to submit clean and fair recommendations. In this case, they didn't. And I believe it's because the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has a member who is a little too closely intertwined with the project because of his personal financial contributions. And I think when Justin Weeters presents to you his petition, and I believe he will, I think that you have to take into consideration, no recommendation that you get from that advisory committee, in my opinion, is going to come without just Danny Prozal's opinion about what will happen with that park because his wife spoke during the most recent advisory committee meeting after my concerns. And she just underscored them by stating something to the effect of Danny and I have personally contributed so much of our own money and our family's money that I absolutely think that means we should have a say what happens there. So I think that raises some serious doubts as to just how skewed anything you get back from them would be if that committee really lets him, you know, call the shots when it comes to the skate park. So it's a little further illustrated by the no graffiti rule that he's quick to implement for everyone except for the people that you can see on the, excuse me, the ESPN Fuel TV YouTube clip that you can see plastering Mountain Dew stickers all over the concrete. He doesn't want other people to damage the park, but it seems like it's okay if it's his friends that are damaging the park or that stickers are okay as long as they're Mountain Dew stickers. There's some skill level and age issues with item M of the ordinance where he's mentioned in his blog that they still had money to raise to add an advanced intermediate bowl and that young people, young children should have two weeks of experience on their skateboard. But then he came to you and said it was his desire to designate the entire park as an intermediate and advanced facility. So I don't get how he can just change on a whim the designation of the facility at any given point in history. I never saw any recommendations or input from the International Scooter Association that clearly states the skate park is the safest place for a new scooter rider to learn from older riders, to learn park etiquette and to take calculated risks. But as a parent, I'm more comfortable with my kid colliding with a smelly and inconvenient 16-year-old than I am a car. And you've put them out on the street now and told us it's for their safety. And I'm asking that you overturn the ordinance in its entirety and really take the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee to task on it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bennett?
Yes?
I'm assuming that there's going to be a petition coming forward. What would be the process for that? Would it go back to Parks and Rec or would it come in front of the city council or?
It would likely depend on to whom it was addressed. I'm going to assume that it will be addressed to the council. We'll make copies of that available once that is received by the city. If the council wants to discuss it themselves first and then provide some direction to the Parks and Recreation Commission, you can do it that way. Or we can simply send it back to them for their review and ask them to report back to the council.
Counselor Daniel?
At the last Parks and Rec meeting, Justin was there and he submitted the petition to the Parks and Rec Commission. And then in addition to that, the Parks and Rec Commission has agreed to put it on the active agenda for next month's Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering what the process was.
We have another speaker up there.
Can we, does he need a chair?
Should I just take it off?
There you go, right here.
My name is Eston Lee and I live on 2070 Wheatlands Avenue. And I think the place is that it's public, so anybody could come with anything and just people forget to share. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any other citizen comments? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything, anybody wants us to pull from the consent agenda? Counselor Randall?
I'd like to take out item B and item C and put it into the active agenda, please.
Okay. And I would like to move item F to the active agenda just to ask Chief Hor a couple questions.
And I would like to split check number 59877 for Pathologist Regional Laboratory and the amount of $35.80 from item G vouchers payable so that I can abstain from voting since that's my employer.
Okay, so we got that? Okay. We need a motion to amend, I guess.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
You need a motion to read?
Now we need a motion to read the consent agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to read the consent agenda.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the city council minutes of the February 24th, 2014, regular meeting. Approving Resolution 2014-18 by title only. A resolution approving the release of a real property residential rehabilitation lien executed by Stella R. Whipple, an individual. Authorizing and directing the community development director to execute said release and providing an effective date. Approving the first reading of ordinance 4605 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code Section 2-180, establishing a subsection 13 Disabilities Advisor Commission and providing an effective date. Approving the vouchers payable dated February 28th, 2014 through March 13th, 2014 in the amount of $1,403,239.2.
Okay, counselors, the consent agenda has been read. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries seven to zero. Onto the active agenda. Item A vouchers payable to Albertsons in the amount of $13.25. I'll accept a motion to approve the vouchers payable to Albertsons with Counselor Daniel abstaining.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero with Counselor Daniel abstaining. Active agenda, item B. Advisory Board and Commission Minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I asked to have this put on the active agenda because I had a question about the minutes. And my question was concerning, under their active agenda, item A, beautiful downtown Lewis Park alcohol permit request.
Should we have a motion to?
Okay.
Read?
I just wanted to make sure you understood what I was asking.
No, no problem.
Okay.
So moved to read?
Okay. Second.
Mayor?
Yeah?
We have, we have several minutes that are in item B.
Okay, well, I guess we need to approve item B.
Yeah.
Right.
Then we'll have our discussion. Is that correct or no?
Well, we just have the discussion now so we can figure out what we need to do about the Parks and Rec Mission Minutes, if that's what it is. And then we can go ahead and vote on an amended item with all the minutes. Everyone fell swoop, I think.
Okay. Counselor Randall?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to read the advisory board minutes for Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
There's no need to read, you just have to approve this item.
Right.
You don't have to read it because it's not under the consent.
Yeah, just approve the.
Approve.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Discussion?
No. Okay. What I was going to ask was, on their active agenda for the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission dated February 19th this year, it concerns a liquor permit for Brackenberry Square for the summer concert. And they asked the representative of the beautiful downtown Lewis and asked the commission to lower the permit cost from a total of $600 to $100. My, are we, was the council going to be approached on this? I don't think the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has the power to lower the cost of permits.
Yeah, I, we would have to look and see how that's set up. I don't, usually the fees that are charged are set up by resolution of the council. But I would tend to think that Counselor Randall is correct that if this is a fee that's been established by the council by resolution, then it can't be changed unless the council changes it. If, on the other hand, it's a, an internal fee that's been set up within the Parks and Recreation Department that did not get, go through a council resolution, I think the council needs to give direction to the Parks and Recreation Commission on this particular issue. It appears that what this says is that the request was reduce the total alcohol license fee from $600 to $50 per vendor. And their request was to reduce that to $100 per vendor. And it appears that Commissioner Kopczynski made a motion to accept that proposal, but whether or not, you know, that was intended to then be forwarded on to the council, I don't know. Counselor Daniel, were you at that meeting?
Yes, yes, I was. My, I was under the impression that it would come eventually to the council, but I'm not quite sure either, I guess, how that's set up. Because reading the minutes now, it actually sounds more like it was passed and that's the way it is, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
According to State Statute 50-210, "The responsibilities and duties and the authority granted permanent boards or commissions shall be enumerated by ordinance." So if it's not in the ordinances or the city code, they don't have that right to lower that permit cost. It has to come to the council.
Okay.
I would agree, I think that's probably the case.
Should we take a motion to amend the minutes and keep these out?
No, these are just minutes.
Okay.
They say what they say. But what we need to do now is go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission for some clarification on what the action was that they took.
Okay.
And to figure out, you know, if that request needs to be made, then how to get it before the council to review that. And I don't know all of the reasons why BDL made that request. I'm guessing that to try and reduce some of the cost to the individual vendors who come and set up for the summer concert series and the hot August nights in the summertime. But without being able to talk to them directly, that's kind of conjecture.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
I would like to make a motion that the, the council give direction to the Parks and Recreation Commission to present us with a resolution on that change so that we can vote on that resolution.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
All supportive, but it sounds like that might be the case regardless of we vote on this anyway. But I mean, I have no problem with the motion.
Okay. Well, having, not having attended the meetings, I'm not quite sure what the intent is. It looks to me like $50 a night for $600 works out to 12 events, apparently. 50 bucks times 12 events, 600 bucks. And maybe that is appropriate that we have them bring forth something that we could actually vote on. But in the meantime, I would assume that it would stand as is. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as a general rule, it should come to the council as a recommendation from the commission. They're an advisory commission to the council, so it should come forward from them as a recommendation to change those fees. And we can check the fee resolutions to see how those are set. They are generally set by the council.
Okay. I mean, still in all, to me, 50 bucks for an event like that, when you've got a lot of people down there and it's split up between many vendors, granted it's times 12 events, but $50 still seems rather inexpensive, but.
Well, we have time to resolve this clearly before we get into, you know, that event season. So we'll get with the Parks and Recreation Department. I'll get ahold of Mr. Barker and then we'll, we'll get something from the Parks and Recreation Commission to the council. And if BDL wants to come and address the council and explain, you know, their rationale behind the request, then they'll be invited to do that. And then you can decide, you know, what do you think is in the best interest of the vendors and the event.
Okay. Sounds reasonable. Okay. So all those in favor of approving advisory board and commission minutes?
We already did that. We already approved the minutes.
Yeah, we approved the minutes.
No, we didn't. Thought we approved it.
Yeah, we approved the minutes.
We're on the motion for.
All we're doing is the motion for having them come together.
Okay. Thank you for keeping me on track.
Okay.
Does everybody understand the motion? Okay. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries seven to zero. Next on the active agenda is Resolution 2014-17, "Approving the Federal Transit Administration 2014 Certifications and Assurances." I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2014-17.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
I had some questions. Basically, what this amounts to is that the council says that we will honor any requests, well, the written requests of the federal government for things that we have to do or we promise we will do in order to get their money. And there's some sections in here, I don't know if we can fulfill those promises. One of them is concerning, let's see what page, what's the page numbers?
What section?
Back here, Group 4, Private Sector Protections. And then it goes to 4A. And it says, "To facilitate FTA's ability to make findings required by 49 USC 5323A1 on behalf of your applicant, you assure that it has or will have, provided, in Part B, provided for the participation of private companies engaged in public transportation to the maximum extent feasible." What that's saying is you can't compete against private entities. And I think we took over the bus service. And I don't think we've offered it up for bid by any private entity here in the, in the recent past. So we might have a problem there. You want to address that?
I just want to see the section.
Okay. Section Group 4. That one right there.
Okay.
You got that?
I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Shannon Groh. Hello. Shannon Groh, transit manager, city of Lewiston. The way I read that section and number A, or letter A, sorry, 1A, is that it is for funding 5303, 5304, and 5306. We are under 5307 funds and I think this is just kind of a boilerplate for all funding. So I think you're going to find that there are some sections in here that don't necessarily apply to, to the city.
Okay. Stay there.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
As long as you tell me what you're looking at, so I can.
Further up on Group 14, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, Group 14. Bus and Bus Facilities Formula Grant Program.
Excuse me, Counselor, which, which section?
14.
14, it's called Bus and Bus Facilities Formula Grants. It's way back toward the end of them. Does that 14A apply to us?
It can. 5339 is discretionary funding. And so the city can negotiate with the other MPOs in the state. And we, we are given a formula of about $50,000 a year, but we would have to, I guess, in a, in a sense, save up to use it.
Well, my question on that is, are we providing seniors at non-peak hours a 50% reduction in fare?
Yes, we, under the 5307 program, you do have to do a half-fare program and we do offer that every hour of the day.
Okay. Okay.
So instead of peak.
In other words, we're meeting those criteria.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. That was my questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Generic question, Shannon. Is this a document that we've approved several years in a row, or is this the first time this has ever come in front of the council?
Yeah, this is a, an annual document.
Annual document.
Yeah. So you'll see it next year.
Thanks, Shannon. Any other questions? Okay, well, then, I guess all those in favor of approving Resolution 2014-17, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up would be active agenda item D, auction of unclaimed and surplus property, approving the release of unclaimed and/or surplus, surplus police department property, propertyroom.com for auction. The reason why I brought this up is I had a question for the chief, if he's got a second.
Yes, sir.
We had a conversation, oh, I don't know if it was last work session or whatever, but when we were talking about the remodel of the, the police training facility.
Yes, sir.
And then disposal of the equipment that's up there. Is there a way that we could maybe, and you said that it would be auctioned off, the retrievable targets and stuff like that, is there a way that we could make a donation or a sale of a dollar to the Lewiston Pistol Club if they had a place to store the stuff until such time, that they could utilize it?
As I stated last week during the work session, that's up to the council, whatever, whatever you choose to do.
Okay, I don't think it's.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's generally not up to the council, I apologize. It's their state statute that requires that anytime we declare something surplus for city use, we have to auction it. We can do an intergovernmental transfer for some money or no money, but to transfer something to a private agency is not permitted under the statute.
So it would still have to be auctioned?
It has to be auctioned off.
But does it have?
If it doesn't sell at auction, I mean, normally what happens is we sell them to propertyroom.com, and so they either sell or don't sell. If they don't sell, it's their job to dispose of them. But if we were auctioning them ourselves, if you did an auction, then you'd have the discretion to, to get rid of the property however you want, but we don't really have any choice once we declare property surplus.
Okay, I guess I'm getting back to the old days, when we put, we had to get new light bars for all the police department vehicles. Remember, we had those old, big, tall ones, and it seems to me like we sold those to some city in California for a buck apiece or something. I kind of wanted one for my own.
That would be an intergovernmental transfer, and you can do that.
Oh, okay.
That's a different, that's an intergovernmental transfer.
We had body armor, I think, that went to the Philippines or something.
Pardon me?
We had some body armor that went to the Philippines, I believe.
Uh, the, the history that I have on that, the body armor remained here in country, is what I understood, but it could have been.
Okay.
I know we didn't put that, because there was a question or there was a desire to put that out for civilian purchase, and that's not what the, we wanted the purpose, that to be repurposed for.
Got it. Okay.
The Pistol Club could certainly bid at auction for those, for any items.
But it would have to go through property.
We'd have to go through the surplus. Now, if you wanted to.
Well, it would have to go through propertyroom.com.
If you wanted to separate those out and have those bid locally, you could do that. It's an onerous process, takes a lot of time, and it requires a staff person to kind of manage that, but if you had specific items that, and this was, you know, on a rare occasion, you wanted to pick them out and auction them off locally, you might be able to do that. There's no guarantee that they'll get the bid, but you could certainly auction them off locally if you wanted to.
I had discussion along those lines with one member, and he wasn't really interested in the equipment, because it is old equipment. There is much better, newer technology available.
Okay. I just, that's the reason why I brought it up, so we could have the discussion, so. Okay. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
So we need to vote on? Yeah. Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the auction of unclaimed and surplus property.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Oh, thank you, Council Blakely. Okay, motion carries six to zero with Council Blakely abstaining. Okay, next up is vouchers payable from 2000, or 2/2814 through 3/1314, in the amount of?
Thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five dollars and eighty cents.
I had thirty-nine oh two.
Thirty-five.
Thank you. Thirty-five dollars and eighty cents to?
Pathologists Regional Laboratories.
Pathologists Regional Laboratories. I'll accept a motion to approve the accounts payable.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero with Mayor Protem Johnson abstaining. That completes our active agenda. Moving on to City Council comments. Do we have any City Council comments this evening? I have one. I just want to bring this up to the attention of the public, people that are here, people that are watching on TV. We apparently have a program in place. It's not just for businesses and city buildings, county buildings, but there's a, there's a, a device, it's called an knockbox, where the, the keys to get inside a building, if you will, are stored in a little box. The fire department has the ability, the police department has the ability to access that key, so if they can get in there, whether it's an emergency, fire, what have you, it's also been afforded to some of our citizens, but apparently not a lot of them know about it. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is we do have some elderly people living on their own. If they make that call to 911, the house is locked, they can't access the door, you know, what do we do to get in? Usually requires law enforcement to get in through the door, either breaking the door down, popping a window, whatever, but this is something that's available to the citizens. You know, they do have to fill out a form, order the box, have the box installed, and then said agency will come up and, and make sure the proper key's put in, stuff like that. I, I have the form here. Acting Chief Travis Michaelbus gave this to me, that we've been talking about this last week or so. If anybody's interested, I'm going to try and figure out a way that we can start some sort of a public information campaign to people that do live on their own, that may not have the ability to let somebody in if they're having an emergency. I think it's going to be a real valuable, valuable tool to some of those people. I mean, the boxes aren't inexpensive, but they're not cost prohibitive, I don't think, and it, it could save some damage at the house and allow, whether it's fire, EMS, or the police, access into their house in an emergency. I think it's a good deal, and I think it'd be a nice service that got put out there for the people that don't know about it in this town, so I'll leave it with that. We'll try and figure something out. One op, one opportunity was maybe a note through the utility billings, or maybe a, you know, press release or something like that, but we'll work on it.
Mr. Mayor. Just like to thank Community Development for the bus ride that we had, that we took a tour of the URA areas, and they explained to us what they were proposing, and so it was an interesting trip.
Yes, it was.
And very educational.
And there is a meeting tomorrow at noon.
Stole my thunder.
Oh, Council Blakely, I'm sorry.
Just in case anybody out there in TV land who couldn't hear the mayor, there is a meeting tomorrow at noon, and there will be discussion about our field trip, so encourage all people to attend.
Yeah, where is?
At, at City Hall, the old chamber, council's in the back of the City Hall building.
Any other council comments? Mr. Bennett?
Just wanted to note that because this month, March, we have five Mondays in the month, that sort of throws our schedule off a bit, so the next council meeting won't be for two weeks, which will be a work session on April 7th, and then the actual next evening meeting of the council will be on April 14th.
Thank you. Advisory Board and Commission appointments? Do we have any this evening? Still looking for members of the SWAC?
Yes, sir.
So we're still looking for two members for the Solid Waste Advisory Commission?
As far as I know.
I think.
I haven't received anything.
Most of our advisory commissions are pretty full right now, so. Work session and agenda topics? Council Blakely?
I would like to possibly bring up revisiting the skateboard park and the ordinance pertaining to it, and, because I've heard other people in the community talking about that, especially parents with children, about how we seem to be exploiting scooters, and so, and I, again, I was, several of us did not participate in that, because that took place in council prior to our election, but I'd like to bring that up for discussion in one of the work sessions, and possibly have a member from the Advisory Board and/or the Parks and Recreation addresses, address the issue.
Okay. And I think we picked up another one this evening in discussion, which would be the fees we're charging for an alcohol permit.
If you're, yeah, we can do that in a work session if you prefer, rather than bringing it straight to the council, yeah.
Whatever the pleasure is, and we can, we can do it here, we could talk about it and then bring it to.
We can at least talk about it in work session and then put it up for a vote on the council meeting after that.
Does that sound reasonable?
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Council Randall?
If you remember, I sent an email out here a little while ago about the, one of the letters to the editor in, I believe it was the Sunday Paper, and it was concerning someone complaining about the taxes on, property taxes on their home, and I sent an email saying, I thought it'd be a good idea to have an educational workshop for the citizens to be able to come and be, have that process, or processes, actually, explain to them as to how it came about when they look at their assessment, how that all came about, and so maybe we should try to look into doing something like that.
Maybe we could get the county involved.
Sure.
The county sets the assessment.
Yeah.
Not the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Council Randall. Maybe have a work session where Mr. Anderson could attend and explain the process.
I'm sure he'd be happy to do that.
Well, I also think Dan Mars could be helpful too on that. He could explain the city's part.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? Well, then we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.